Order, um, good evening, I am Patty McCoyn, thank you for coming out tonight. Um, I'm gonna have, uh, the board members, um, introduce themselves, starting with Mr. Kehoe.
Hi, I'm Patrick Kehoe, thanks for joining us this evening.
I'm Judy Westra, thank you for coming out tonight.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard, and it's nice to see everybody tonight.
Uh, Dr. Merritt, oh, I'm sorry, Josh.
Josh Patterson Plymouth Junior now, and a student of Voice in Action Co-Chair.
Hi, I'm Sayeed Pohar, um, a senior at Canton High School and a representative of the students, I'm a student co-chair for SBA.
Alright, Dr. Merritt, did you want to introduce yourself and your staff?
Yes, good evening, Monica Merritt Superintendent, and I am glad to see everyone in the audience this evening, I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, want to thank her for taking care of us and ensuring our minutes are captured for our community that can't be here. Ms. Carly Raze, our Assistant Director of Communication and Marketing, and she's taking care of our needs on technology this evening, like the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Tiskowitz.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt, good evening and welcome, I'm Kurt Tiskowitz Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Jill Minnick, I serve as Chief Finance and Operations Officer, welcome, good to see you this evening.
I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer, welcome, thank you for being here tonight.
I'm Abdul Mayoun, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Welcome everyone, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement.
Alright, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we are on to Letter A, Adoption of Agenda and Approval of Consent Agenda, I am looking for a motion.
I'm Vice President, I move that we adopt, uh, the, and approve the consent agenda, uh, action item twenty-five oh-eight oh-four.
Second.
Alright, it has been, uh, motioned by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Westra, um, Dr. Merritt, will you take us through?
Thank you Vice President McCoyn, this evening, we have our human resources, uh, transaction, since the last time we were together, our HR department has been busy hiring champions, so we have some new hires for your consideration, this evening, we also have some leaves, resignations, and retirements. In addition, we have the approval of minutes, this is from our regular meeting, that was an organizational meeting, on July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, and finally, we have first reading of Policy three-two-two-zero, that is a professional staff evaluation.
Alright, um, I will call for the vote, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Alright, four-zero, Mr. Madun, if you could take it away.
I have a lot of chocolate here today. Um, well, I would like to, um, welcome some of our, first I want to honor our new contracts, our new hires, if you happen to be here, please stand up and, uh, go forward, and, um, I will give you your lovely chocolate, and if you want to say a few words to us, we would gladly like to hear you. So, is there Dana Arning here? Dana Arning is, was hired as a resource room teacher, um, um, for the district at East, at East, um, at East Middle School. Maria Fernanda Cusick?
Hi.
Hi. She is the new Spanish teacher at Pioneer, welcome to the committee.
Thank you.
Samantha Fitzsimmons, who's hired as occupational therapist at Canton Salem.
I'm very happy to join the team, I have my daughters in Plymouth Canton Schools at whole thing, and I have family members, um, and family friends throughout as teachers, and I'm happy to join.
Welcome.
Every happy, welcome.
Next, we have, um, Margaret Metlin. She, Margaret Metlin is hired as occupational therapist at Farron and Field, we welcome her to the district. Joseph Morris. Joseph Morris is hired as a counselor at Discovery, we welcome him to the district.
I was the, uh, intern at Canton, and I just liked it so much, I came back.
Thank you.
Good, happy to be back.
Brooke Wanshawn. Um, is, is hired as a nurse, and she'll be working at Hoben and Discovery, welcome to Plymouth Canton.
I'm Brooke, I'm a, um, I'm a nurse, I'm a pediatric nurse, and I am really excited, I grew up in Plymouth Canton, and I have two daughters that are attending Tonda, um, and I am very excited to be now employed by Plymouth Canton, thank you guys.
So, I'd like to, I mentioned Stephanie Hayes, who's been hired as our new executive director of special services, I'm, I'm sorry, of, um, special education, um, that, she's, um, she's a, she's wonderful with the amount of, um, experience she has, and in multiple districts, and we are so happy to have her with the district, but she was unable to make it today, so thank you. Matthew Lentz. Matt? Matthew Lentz has been hired as, is our new Director of Capital Programs and Facilities, and you see how big the smile is on Jill's face right now?
Thank you everyone, uh, I'm happy to be here, and I'm excited to get to work, and, uh, excited for the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin Opferman. Caitlin has been hired as our new, um, um, program coordinator of early childhood education.
Alright, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm very excited to work with everyone, and effectuate change for our youngest learners, thank you.
This is Gwinnalyn Pollak. Hired as our new payroll coordinator, again, Jill has the biggest smile on her face.
I'd like to say thank you very much, it's been a very warm welcome, and I'm happy to be here, thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany Roberts. Tiffany has been hired as our new Assistant Principal of Activities and Athletics at Canton High School. Welcome.
Just want to say thank you very much for this opportunity, I'm super pumped to be here, I can't wait to meet more of, uh, our staff, students, administrators, and especially the community members, so thank you very much.
Lindsay Seagres. Lindsay has been hired as our new principal at Erickson Elementary.
Good evening, everyone, I'm absolutely thrilled to be joining the team at Erickson, and being able to serve the greater Plymouth Canton community, the year is off to a great start already, this week has been wonderful, everyone's been so welcoming, and I'm looking forward to a great year, thank you.
Also, we're new hired for TES, Harold Wimberly Junior. Harold has been hired as the new Dean of Student Support at Discovery Middle School.
Thank you so much, I'm working in a place my wife shops all the time, she's gonna kill me for saying that, but that's alright, thank you so much, and I look forward to the opportunity.
Welcome.
So, next I would like to talk about our retirements, um, these people have, um, these, um, employees have put in a lot of years with our district, and we always want to make sure we recognize them in their next endeavors, so we have Donna Riddell, who was elementary classroom teacher at Bentley, she has been, um, employee of the district since nineteen ninety-six, um, we wish her well in her retirement. Um, we have Valerie Russo, who's a counselor at West, um, she has been, um, employee of the district since nineteen ninety-nine, um, we also have Bridget Wallman, uh, who was a Life and Management Family and Consumer Science teacher at Discovery. And last of our retirements is Kathleen West, who was a resource room teacher at, at ISBister. We would like to give all of our retirees, um, one welcome, I know we're sad that they're gone, there's years of experience we've lost, but they've put in the time, and they deserve to have a nice second, um, half their life, so let's give them some applause. A lot of hiring, and thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for choosing us, alright, we are moving on to B, which is Board Committee Reports in Action, um, there's no president's report, um, Miss Christiansen is not here, and it is summer, alright, so the first one is Student Performance and Achievement Committee, um, Ms. Wester, do you have anything?
Um, we have not met since our last meeting, we will begin our meeting soon, um, we usually meet on the, uh, first, first Wednesday of the month, in this room, at five PM, always get it wrong, it's all good.
Alright, the next one is Policy, and I am the Chair of that committee, uh, we will be meeting in two weeks from tonight, on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, at five-thirty, we meet in the collaboration space, which is down all the way to the end, and you, you will run into it, everybody is welcome, um, we are going through all of our policies to make sure that they are not only compliant with the law, but up to date. Um, the next one is Student Voice in Action, um, Miss Christiansen is not here, but Josh and Sayeed, do you have anything?
Yeah, so SBA, or Student Voice in Action, is kicking back into things, and we will be participating, hopefully, at the Back to School Bash, and then...
Um, our next meeting day is currently to be determined, but it will be at six PM, uh, at the Canton High School Media Center.
Great, and then Mr. Kehoe, Finance and Operations.
Thank you, uh, we actually skipped the last Finance and Operations meeting, so I was super excited to not be able to report something about Finance and Operations from our last meeting, um, our next meeting is Thursday, uh, August twenty-second, here in this room, at five PM, and we welcome people to come to the most exciting committee.
Yeah, alright, we're not sure that one is actually true, but, we're gonna let it go, alright, uh, we are on to Administrative Reports and Recommendations, Dr. Merritt, you are up.
Thank you, before I take an opportunity to celebrate our amazing student staff, I do just want to give a shout out to Ms. Rail, the entire Teaching and Learning Department, we had our administrative retreat, kicking off our building administrators returning for the summer, and, uh, this is day two, and they have had a phenomenal experience, full of learning, and, um, collegiality, and, uh, just growing and stretching, um, and just preparing themselves to really have a fantastic school year, and so the preparation that went into that, um, was something that was very extensive and greatly appreciated, and already on day two, I'm just hearing so much positive feedback, everybody is prepared and ready for our students to enter in just a few short weeks, so just thank you for your work on that. Um, I'd like to sha, give a shout out to our PCEP student Nicholas Rogers, he is artistic talent, was recognized by the Michigan Department of State recently, when he was named a finalist in the high school category of the inaugural I-Voted sticker contest for the state of Michigan, more than four-hundred-and-eighty submissions were received from Michiganders across the state, and Nicholas's design was one of twenty-five submissions per category that made the final public vote. Winners will be announced this month, and we will receive special recognition from the Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, winning stickers will be available for election clerks to order for the November election, so just join me in, uh, speaking with our young coaches here. And although you think it's summer, I'm telling you, our students are the gift that keeps on giving, our, congratulations are definitely in order for our, three of our PCCS middle school students, Verwan Hamad from Discovery, Simon Reed from West, and Evan Zen from East, who swept the top three places at the twenty-twenty-four State of Michigan Civics Bee. The competition, which was sponsored by the US Chamber of Commerce Foundation, featured winners of local civics bees from around the state, Evan Zen took state championship honors, Simon Reed finished with second place, and Verwan Hamad placed third. Evan's win means that he has advanced to the National Civics Bee Finals in Washington, DC, let's give them a shout out. As I just talked about the preparation of our administrators, it is hard to believe that school is about to be back in session, and as we continue to prepare for the arrival of our young people, I want to remind our district families that the online back-to-school check-in, this process will open tomorrow through our MyStar Parent Connection website. This back-to-school check-in process is a requirement for returning kindergarten through twelfth-grade PCCS families to really easily update their medical, demographic, contact, and transportation information. The deadline for completion is Monday, September the thirtieth, we'll be working with our Communications and Marketing Department to get information out on social media, maybe using our text message features, to just make sure that we are able to keep parents informed about this important check-in process. As I wrap up this evening, or close to wrap up, I just want to continue to thank our community for, um, their support of our twenty-twenty bond, we are so grateful for this bond that passed in March of twenty-twenty, we have made significant upgrades across our facilities with more to come, here are the latest upgrades that we wanted you to take a look at, at PCEP, the Plymouth High School and Auditorium and Multipurpose Room is nearly complete, the thirty-five-thousand-square-foot space includes an eight-lane pool, a gym, and a grand corridor, the pool is ready, glasswork is done, and safety and concrete work is ongoing, bleachers and landscaping will be finished soon, last meeting, I talked to some board members to say if you're interested in having a tour, so we're getting that arranged, as soon as we get the go-ahead to get you in there, it is something, it is to behold, it is beautiful. Work also continues on the new stadium and multipurpose room that's located at Canton High School, with crews focusing on masonry and electrical and roofing, roofing, um, currently. In mid, eh, I can't even talk, in East Middle School, we're seeing renovations to ceilings, kitchens, and locker rooms, along with a new main office and secure vestibule, ceiling grids are nearly done, and foundation work for the addition is in progress, and finally, right around the corner, West Middle School, it's getting architectural and mechanical upgrades, plus a renovated main office, the framing has started, concrete is poured, I'm a little nervous with the start of school, but I'm gonna keep the faith that this new concrete and science room ca, work, uh, casework will be installed, and will be ready for the start of school, and in the event that we are not ready, we will definitely have a Plan B, because we will have our classrooms ready to welcome our students, but I think we're on track. Finally, our Back to School Bash is coming, I want to extend another invitation to the PCCS community to celebrate the new school year with us at this year's Back to School Bash, this is gonna be on August the twenty-fourth, it takes place at the PCEP Bus Loop, it's full of games, and prizes, and food, and fun, but most excitingly, it's filled with information and the opportunity to meet our incredible staff, the Plymouth Canton Educational Foundation will also be offering plenty of fun activities for families, including this year, an obstacle course, that's new, right Carly? I don't remember the obstacle course, face painting, and a petting zoo, um, again, we'll be at the PCEP Bus Loop, families will have a chance to tour the campus, I always recall being a parent myself, and just feeling so overwhelmed by that large campus, so I love the opportunity to open up our doors, the kids are never concerned about it, but the parents just need the opportunity to see and experience it, so we have that, that chance for both our families and our students. The best part is this bash is completely free to attend, and so it really is a celebration as we think about that start of the new school year, so again, we invite all board members, our community members, our families, our students, our staff, to come out and let's celebrate a start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and that ends my report for this evening.
Alright, thank you, um, up next, we have Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick, and we have an action item, um, I'm looking for, do we want to have a motion first, or does this, yeah, let's do the motion first.
Um, Madam Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a PCEP Drain Easement for the Willow Creek Drain, uh, this will be a first and final reading, and the action item number is twenty-five oh-eight oh-five.
Yeah, I'm looking for a second.
Second, okay.
Alright, the move by Member Kehoe, and seconded by Member Westra?
Thank you, Vice President McCoyn, yes, for your consideration this evening, is the approval of drain easements, there are two easements in this package, uh, for the Willow Que, Willow Creek Drain at the Plymouth Canton Educational Park, um, this is the final iteration of easements that will be pertinent to all of our projects out at the park, uh, aside from any water main or, um, sewer easements perhaps, but this is around the drain easements that will allow these permits to start flowing for the projects that we have, uh, scheduled, and that we've been speaking so often, FNO committee about, uh, we've just been waiting and waiting, so here we are, um, we're very excited, and, um, if you have, I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have around these two easements.
So, um, is this, the, is this the easement that we've been waiting for, for the tennis court, uh, additions?
Yes, it is.
So, we've not been able to start construction for that yet?
That's right.
Okay, and then when this gets signed, we'll be able to start construction, do we, are we still gonna be on target with this?
We are, I, I see Brian coming to the podium, Brian Guzman with our Construction Management Group, uh, but it'll be just right there at the line, but go ahead, Brian.
Um, so yeah, so we're excited to get this easement finally, so we can get it executed and, and continue work, we are poised to basically begin almost immediately, as everybody probably knows, we were hoping to start in May, basically, with this project, but, um, this easement documentation is substantial, and, and took a long time to, to get fully executed, so our plan would be to start in the next two weeks, um, certainly couldn't guarantee what weather does, um, when we bid the project out specifically for the tennis courts, we were fearful that we might run into something like this, so we had a, a Plan A, Plan B, Plan B would actually to defer it all to next year, which comes at a, a cost premium, and then certainly from an impact on the students, uh, it would be much more significant, so, um, although I can't sit here and promise that it'll be all a hundred percent done by the end, by the time the snow flies, whenever that may be, um, certainly we have enough, you know, nice weather left in this year to make significant progress, to minimize any impact that might occur in the spring for next year.
Okay, great, those are my questions, and just for reference for board, normally this would come through FNO, but because this was the only thing, we figured we just would bring it forward here and have a discussion of the full board.
I have no questions, thank you for the presentation, and the diagrams that are in the packet.
Oh, I have no questions, I'll, we discussed it.
Okay, alright, um, call for the vote, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, we'll be done, alright, uh, we are on to Systems Comments, uh, when I call your name, um, step up to the podium, Ms. Raze will start the timer, you have three minutes, um, give your name, and then your comment, when the timer goes off, we ask that you, um, finish up your sentence, and then, uh, so we can move on, so the first one is Peter Holcomb.
Good evening, my name is Peter Holcomb, and I'm here tonight to express our family's profound disappointment with the handling of Gavin Holcomb's case by PCCS, sorry, particularly regarding the verbal abuse, targeting, bullying, and mistreatment he has suffered at the hands of the wrestling Salem coach. On April eighth, our attorney submitted a demand letter to Monica Merritt outlining our series of concerns, this letter was subsequently, subsequently assigned to Abdul Mayoun for further actions, over the past five months, we have provided a comprehensive array of evidence, including documents, photographs, alumni testimonials, witness lists, and parental support letters, all these materials substantiate the gross misconduct by the Salem wrestling coaches and athletic director, we will be sending a copy of this document to the entire report after this meeting, is our initial, uh, in our initial meeting with Abdul, it was clear that the coaching staff and athletic director demonstrated a lack of professionalism and restraint throughout the wrestling season, Abdul immediately recognized the severity of this misconduct, yet it appeared that the others within PCCS have viewed these issues throughout the troubling, lenient, uh, lenient lens, it is undeniable that Gavin was cornered by two coaches, subjected to verbal abuse and profanity, and ridiculed in front of his teammates, and forced to run excessive on concrete, just two days prior to state championships, the subsequent of this event wa, was witnessed by ten other wrestlers that Abdul has confirmed, despite this, Tim Beckler during a meeting with the AD, parents and coaches, expressed concern only over the excessive physical punishment, and showed no interest in addressing the bullying, verbal harassment, or humiliation given, um, humiliation Gavin experienced, Abdul recommended Gavin be transferred to Plymouth as an option to ensure Gavin's safety and alleviate his stress, we agreed with this at the reasonable solution while PCCS decided how to proceed with an investigation, much tortuous May, it is now August, the transfer has been denied, and the remedy for the coaching staff is still in limbo, with school quickly approaching, our alternative options to relocate and take advantage of school choice of, school choice has been eliminated, it appears the only PCC, only option PCCS is offering is a student in peril is for Gavin, a sixteen-year-old minor, to return to an environment that remains abusive, disjointed, and unprofessional, it is deeply troubling to see that in the name of protecting the so-called good old boys' network within PCCS, Gavin is being forced to endure unnecessary mental anguish, my perception of PCCS has sadly aligned with the negative experiences shared by many other parents, we are particularly grateful to Abdul for his immediate attention to protect Gavin, though this is clear, his proposals have been obstructed by other decision-makers within PCCS, it seems that PCCS is not a place for fresh perspective or genuine concern for student welfare, to ensure that they can learn, prepare, and thrive, thank you Abdul for sharing empathy and striving to protect a student in need, while initially sought only a, uh, only a fair and prompt resolution, it has become evident that we now face a long and diff, difficult struggle, we are prepared to involve the state of Michigan, MHSA, MHSCA, and other third-party advocates, to ensure that the abuse and ensure safety, a safe environment for all students, thank you.
Uh, next up is Marilyn Holcomb.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Holcomb, and I'm here as the mother of Gavin Holcomb, a junior honor roll student and varsity wrestler at Salem High School, Gavin has excelled in wrestling, qualifying for MHSA states in both his freshman and sophomore year, however, he is now facing severe issues that threaten not only his passion for the sport, but his overall well-being. Gavin has been subjected to ongoing verbal harassment and abuse by the Salem wrestling coaches, this mistreatment has occurred in front of his teammates, as well as in a private setting, when his teammates attempted to support him, the coaches had threatened them by saying, would you rather switch with Gavin, this created an unsafe environment for Gavin and his teammates, according to the PSE mission statement, it is essential to support not only academic and personal success, but also the physical and emotional well-being of students, furthermore, the PCCS Coach Handbook clearly states that coaches should use discretion and proper language, the use of profanity is unacceptable, and coaches are expected to be in control of their behavior at all times, including the coaching staff, this situation has been also been ignored by the Salem AD, Tim Beckler, who dismissed our concerns and instructed us, go back to being loving parents, and stop documenting all this, instead of investigating this issue, his dismissive attitude is a serious failure to protect our child, this needs to be taken seriously, otherwise, this situation is gonna happen over and over again next season, behind closed wrestling doors, with no cameras, in an unsafe environment, with further retaliation for the wrestlers, including my son, the coaches have demanded closed practices, and even when my husband attempted to observe for the safety of my son, he was told to leave, this needs to stop for Gavin's sake, and other wrestlers, this started over five months ago, and no one has spoken to Coach Wojcuk or Coach Ross, no one has denied what happened, including the AD, coaches wrestling, who've observed this abuse, so far, it's been sitting in the hands with the wrestling coaches, Tim Beckler, Hal Heard, and Abdul, what is the Board of Education gonna do to protect and guarantee our child's safety behind closed door, Gavin's afraid to attend practices, meets, and events, the coaches have clearly stated that they have no remorse, they have even singled him out this summer off of campus, including taking his picture, tapping his head, and making him feel uncomfortable, thank you.
Uh, next up is Gavin Holcomb.
Hello, my name is Gavin Holcomb, and I want to share my experience from the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four wrestling season, which has been incredibly challenging and distressing, throughout the season, I faced bullying, targeted harassment, and verbal abuse, including the use of profanity by my coaches, the detailed accounts of these incidents are outlined in the demand letter, but I want to emphasize how deeply they have affected me personally, these experiences have profoundly shaken my passion for wrestling, and left me with a significant anxiety and fear, even during the summer, the situation has not improved, in fact, it seems to be, to have worsened, as the coaches have become more daring, they continue to take intrusive photos of me, and make unsettling comments in public, making me-
making me present around them, both awkward and distressing. I've been plagued with nightmares and I feel like a constant sense of dread when I am near them. The environment of Salem where those coaches are deeply involved feels threatening and unwelcoming. Unfortunately, I'm not the first Salem student wrestler to feel this way. I'm just the first to confront the misconduct directly and openly while acknowledging my vulnerability. My concerns for the upcoming season are heightened by the fact that Coach Pete has explicitly stated he does not want to be my coach by a comment replayed by Abdul. This is not surprising considering the threats made by both AD and Coach Pete to withdraw my participation just days before the last season's state championship. This seems to be their way of reminding me and my parents of their authority. I know this came hours after the incident where I was bullied, targeted, and verbally harassed with profanity by my coaching staff. It is these examples coupled with unsettling stories from alumni about coaches being racist and disturbing case of a teammate being removed from his team after he opened up to Coach Pete that he was dealing with emotional devastation from the suicide of his best friend and as a result, was unable to focus on wrestling. His reward for entrusting his coach, banishment in the greatest time of need. The backlash and negative atmosphere within the team only adds up to my fear and what lies ahead for the upcoming season. It is disheartening to feel like I am suffering as a victim while the coaching staff and athletic director seem to be overlooked through these serious issues, showing a lack of concern for the well-being of students. I am strong and resourceful and despite these challenges, I am working with a mindset coach to help me manage my anxiety and rebuild my passion for the sport. However, it is disheartening to feel that I am the one facing these issues alone. With those in position of power seem to be getting a free pass, no student deserves to go through what I am experiencing. I urge those in authority to address these problems seriously. It is crucial for the environment at Salem becomes one where students can feel safe, supported, and empowered to learn, prepare, and thrive.
All right, next up, Bobby Haka.
My name is Katie Cleveland and I'd like to go ahead of Bobby. She's going to go after me if that's all right?
Feel free.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Katie Cleveland and I'm speaking to you as a member of the Executive Board of PCAOP Local 6172, representing 65 administrative assistants here at Plymouth Canton Community Schools. As administrative assistants, we are often the first person to interact with our community, including parents and students. It is not uncommon to see administrative assistants providing first aid to students when hurt, Kleenex when they are crying, and a snack when they are hungry. We walk students to their classes, administer medication, and assist with their homework needs. Administrative assistants are some of the biggest cheerleaders for our students, teachers, and administrators' success. Administrative assistants help with kindergarten roundups, 8th grade celebrations, and high school graduations. We assist in such things as standardized testing, the student registration process, as well as completing building or department-level payroll. We also order supplies for our teachers in the buildings we work in. These are just a few examples of the tremendous amount of work and responsibilities we carry out daily. We work with every department within the district such as security, maintenance, food services, transportation, technology, and finance, to name a few. We work side by side with teachers, counselors, nurses, and administrators on a daily basis. The reason we stand before you today is to ask for your support and to direct the district human resource directors to treat us with the same respect and dignity that we deserve and that was afforded to the groups that bargained before us. Thank you.
All right, now Bobby Haka.
Hello, I am Bobby Haka and I am speaking to you as the president of PCAOP Local 6172. This year is a negotiation year that started with an email from the district which suggested bargaining dates in March. However, most of those dates conflicted with preparing for standardized testing that takes place in the spring. We indicated we'd be available in May. We were immediately met with a letter from the district's attorney telling us we were being unreasonable and reminding us of bargaining law. The district failed to call to discuss options, but instead they resorted to the district's attorney to schedule meetings. We were then informed that the lawyer was the lead negotiator, which was never explained prior to this nor in this communication. This unit has never bargained with a contract with the district's attorney at the table. Our first request during negotiations was for communication because it is at the crux of our issues with this district. The district's lack of communication is realized in the increase of grievances we have had to file this past year. As bargaining progressed, here are a few things to note. First, while negotiating a new contract, the old contract remains in place. Second, for decades, administrative assistants have worked their assignments as they are needed throughout the calendar year, including the summer months during which they can schedule non-workdays and earn vacation days. Third, the district implemented a new work calendar for administrators as part of their contract and they were not to work in July. At the end of June, the district made the unilateral decision to start, that started July 1st, administrative assistants working the summer had to have pre-approval to work. It was their expectation that if we scheduled ourselves to work without obtaining pre-approval, we could not continue with that work. This communication was sent to us on July 1st at 11:21 in the morning. Administrative assistants were asked to leave in the middle of their workday without any notice. With administrators not working in July, the process of getting approval to continue our work was difficult and unreliable. The administrators were instructed that only did we need their approval to work, but they also needed their level leaders' approval and that the administrators would have to be in the building with us if we were given that approval. We are hourly employees and if we don't work, we don't get paid. The negotiations team explained to the district the impact this decision was having on its members. We have single parents trying to put foot on their table. We all have bills to pay. This decision was affecting our ability to do so. We also explained the negative effect it would have on our ability to open the schools and have them ready for student-scheduled pickup and for teachers to return. All of our efforts failed and now some are afraid that we may not be ready for the students and the parents the first week of school. The district and this unit are now headed to mediation. Per perspective, I have been with the district for 12 years and I am on step four of a six-step scale. I have only seen an increase in my paycheck once in the past five years as healthcare contributions have increased more than my pay has. We do not make a livable wage. As of July 1st, we now have the staff that work with us in our offices who have less responsibilities than we do, making more than we are making. We do their payroll. We are asking that we be fairly compensated. Until now, this unit has never been in front of the Board of Education. We are here because we feel it's necessary that you hear from us. And it is necessary that the one thing we never thought we would have to fight for is the respect everyone deserves to be treated with. Thank you.
Jennifer? Jennifer Voss.
Today I stand before you to address a pressing issue that has been on the minds of many families and community members. The lack of transparency in communication and accountability within our school administration. It is disheartening to see a disconnect between the administration and the families they serve. The unfinished and completely stalled football field, incomplete tennis courts requiring families to require to Wayne Memorial, the poor reading test scores, and lack of staffing and maintenance are just a few examples of the challenges we face. Families deserve to know the reasons behind these issues and what is being done to address them. I have experienced firsthand the frustration of being met with vague responses like "it's being looked into" or "we'll get back to you", only to never receive even a reach-out or satisfactory answer. This lack of follow-up and accountability is unacceptable. Someone needs to have the courage to say, "Here's the problem. Here's why it happened, and here's what we are doing to fix it." The school board has a crucial role in ensuring that the administration is held accountable for its actions. Open communication, responsiveness, and a commitment to address the concerns of families and staff are essential to building trust and fostering a supportive educational environment. I urge the school board to take the necessary steps to address these issues and prioritize transparency and accountability within our district. The future of our school community depends on the actions we take today. Failure to act will only lead to further disillusionment, student loss, and a loss of trust. I implore you to listen to the voices of the community, to recognize the importance of transparency, and to work towards a brighter future for our school district. Change is inevitable and it is up to us to steer it in the right direction. I'm Jennifer Voss and I'm running this November to represent our community, families, and staff on the PCCS Board of Education.
All right, thank you. We are moving on to Letter E, discussion. And the first thing up is the MASB Delegate Assembly.
All right, so you received information in your board notes this past weekend. It is that time of the year that we need to establish up to four delegates, but we need one that would go and vote on behalf of PCCS. I gave you the date of October. I believe it's the 24th. Ask you to check your calendars. And is anyone among you interested in being considered as a delegate for our district?
Remind us again where the MASB is Lansing this evening?
It's in Lansing, at the Lansing Convention Center. There's also the annual leadership conferences at the same, starts the next day.
How many people do we need to have again?
Well, we can have up to four.
Okay, but we have to have one?
They like to have at least a representative.
If we need somebody to go, given that this is not in Traverse City or something like that, I could go, I'd be happy to participate.
So we can, I know we have a few members that are not here. Ms. Tiskowitz, what is our deadline for knowing? So we have some time. We can bring it up again. But I would say go ahead and pencil in that date. That would be very helpful. Thank you very much.
It's Thursday the 24th, correct?
Yes, Thursday the 24th.
And is it, it's in the evening?
Is it seven?
Right, okay, good.
And depending on what is brought forward, it could be a short meeting or it could be a long meeting. But after the meeting, if it makes a difference, they do have the exhibitors hall open and they serve some hors d'oeuvres. And you can chat with all of the vendors and they have swag. If that sweetens it up for anybody that wants to go.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next topic is expulsion training, potential dates.
So for board, if you could pull up your calendars, this is the expulsion training we talked about that is a joint training session on our expulsion process between members of the Board of Education as well as our administrative panel that hears expulsion hearings for Board of Education. The legal team has offered October 8th as a possible date for this training. Mr. Tiskowitz, was that a 5 o'clock start or later than that?
We were looking at 5:30.
5:30. Wondering if that would be a date that would be acceptable and if so...
There's a board meeting that night, correct?
Yes. So the training they're anticipating would be an hour, but we'd say we would allow for an hour and a half. That's why starting at 5:30, but the goal would hopefully be able to be done by 6:30 and then we would go right into our board meeting.
That works for me.
It works.
All right, perfect. So I will confirm with our legal team and we will plan for that expulsion training to take place and we'll have the administrative team there as well. Thank you for that.
And then the last item on here, I'm sorry, the last item on my printed agenda. But there's more after this, is the board meeting presentation schedule. Does anybody have anything they would like to have added? You can always, of course, email it to Dr. Merritt.
So just as an awareness for all, as we schedule our presentations for our board and our community in alignment with our dynamic plan to just ensure that we are maintaining transparency on our progress, on our objectives and goals for the district, we set up these presentations for each of our board meetings. There are certain things that have to be done annually, such as the budget. We have our data review that takes place twice a year. We've had some requests from board members as well. So we have the draft calendar you've had for your review. And if there are additional topics, you don't have to have them tonight, but we just wanted to capture that if you did, that you would like to see a presentation on, this is an opportunity to talk about that. As a reminder, we need at least two board members that would be interested in a topic in order for that to go on to the agenda as an actual presentation. Now, we have captured at the end of that master calendar some topics that are carryover from last school year that we know we have multiple board members that are interested in that presentation. One is the activities and athletics presentation, so you'll see that at the bottom. Most recently, out of SPA, there was a request to have a community education presentation. I think we were actually able to put that on the agenda already for the second meeting, maybe in September. So you can take a look at that list. If there's anything you'd like to lift this evening for our consideration, we could plug it in. And if not, it's either something that you could, we could talk about at the next meeting. But again, we can maybe send ideas to President Christensen and Vice President McCoyn. And if we have multiple people that are interested, those are some ideas that we can add. Again, this is fluid, so we can keep that calendar open if there's other topics throughout the course of the year that you might be interested in seeing a presentation on.
Those, I saw the things I wanted to see.
Perfect.
All right. All right, and then the last one is, discussion item is PCE chillers. And this is something that just came up.
Yes, so we appreciate it. I'm going to ask Ms. Minnick to continue the conversation. I know we've been talking a while. We've just under the bond. We were able to replace the chiller at Salem. We've been talking about some issues at Plymouth with the plan to rent a chiller this summer. And here recently, we're also having some hiccups at Canton as well. So Ms. Minnick just wanted an opportunity to kind of share in real time and we'll continue this discussion at FNO.
Thank you very much. As Dr. Merritt mentioned, we basically want to alert you to some challenges we are experiencing at the park with chillers at each of the three high schools. As also Dr. Merritt mentioned, in June, the board was gracious enough to approve the purchase of a new chiller at Salem. And since that time, we are experiencing challenges with Plymouth and with Canton. At Plymouth, we experienced a power outage which caused extensive damage to the chiller. So we are working on a repair and quoting for a new chiller to bring forward to the board. We are filing our insurance paperwork and so forth. But we are working to perhaps, perhaps require a temporary unit, one on a trailer that we can rent for a month, two months, until we don't need the cooling anymore in early fall. So we are trying to, in rapid short order, put together a package for your consideration at FNO and for the full board. And in regards to Canton, we have experienced a number of troubles with those chillers as well. Even starting back in May and June, it's been up, it's been down, it's been up, it's been down. And so while we are still troubleshooting that repair, I would anticipate that you can expect something coming from our team, whether we are able to repair that, whether we are looking forward to perhaps replacing that unit. Replacing the Canton chiller is not part of the bond program, yet we have just such extensive troubles that the repairs are beginning to be quite costly and it may make better financial sense to invest that in a new unit. We're still going through that analysis at this time. Hopefully with Canton, we can still troubleshoot that and get it going. I just wanted to make you all aware of the troubles that we are having and experiencing. Extremely warm temperatures in the buildings as staff are returning at Canton and Plymouth as well. But we are close to getting a rental unit in place at Plymouth. And so we're just going to keep moving forward and keep you apprised and bring forward any recommendations that we may have.
Does anybody?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, please go ahead.
No, do you have anything to say? Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to touch base because I remember we've had extensive conversations about the chillers. The one at Canton, I thought, was the one that we had had problems after the power outage in the spring. And I thought that they were able to get that going and rebalance it. Is that giving us trouble again?
Yes, it is. And so we've experienced outages and then needing to repair. We get it going and then it's not working. It's been very problematic.
Okay.
Yes.
And the ones at Plymouth, that's a new problem, correct? We have not had problems with that previously in this school year, correct?
That's true. To my reflection, yes.
And which school has our summer school program? Is that finished at this point?
We have a number of schools.
The high school program is at Canton and it is finished for the year.
Okay, so it's finished. So were we experiencing those problems during the summer school program?
I do not know the answer to that question, so Jill, you might.
We become aware of it as it's brought to our attention. There are times when we've gone out to troubleshoot the repair and it's working beautifully, almost too well. It's quite chilly. And then we'll have a report. It's quite chilly. And then we'll have a report the next day that it's not working at all. Our staff is working very hard to identify why it's been so problematic and why it is on and off. So we're continuing to work on that, and we are hoping to have those temperatures level and comfortable for the return of our teachers and our students.
Okay. And you mentioned bringing in a temporary unit. Is that at both of those buildings or only at Plymouth?
That's at Plymouth at this time.
Okay. And do we think we also want to get on the schedule to get one for Canton, or is it too early to make that judgment?
So that's what we are talking about internally. We're understanding where are we at with our troubleshooting with our internal staff, and then at what point are we going to require that rental unit, knowing that teachers are coming back in about two, not quite two weeks, less than that, and our students are arriving in short order after that.
Right. So obviously, it may be more economical for us to replace those units, but the lead time on that would not be...
That's right.
Would not work for us. We would have to have a rental if we can't fix it. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Josh? Say? No. All right. We have come to the end of our agenda, so we are going to adjourn the meeting. It is 7:55. Have a lovely evening.